Convene by video conference in compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via teleconferencing without in-person attendance by the public. In addition, the public has been provided with the ability to view, hear, and participate in the meeting. A transcript will be provided at a later date. There's a quorum of the board members for this meeting. The link to this, to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public and a video of the meeting will be made available on public access television, as well as a link on the town's website. Further, all submissions, materials, and agendas are available to be viewed on the town's website. So I think we have a quorum, so let's bring the meeting to order. And again, we will not be hearing the Twin Ridges Road Fiore application. There's an issue with regard to septic with the county, so we're tentatively scheduling it to see it in two weeks on the 16th. If, if the issues are resolved. So that being said, we'll move now to our first item on the agenda, which is our second, but now our first. And that's the Kingfisher Philanthropies. And this is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval site development plan application entry permit removal permit.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, there you are, John. I didn't see you.
Yes. Shall I start?
Yeah, absolutely. Please.
Sure, sure. Well, John Kirkpatrick, a Thirni and City Planner, and I'm representing Kingfisher Philanthropies. As you said, our application is for lot merger, site plan, and tree removal. We've been before you before. And we'll try to move through this. With me here are Laura Damaris, who is a founder and trustee of Kingfisher. Jerry Tortorella, attorney. You may remember Jerry formerly represented the original subdivider of this whole, this whole subdivision. Tony Grau, Keller Federico Engineers, and Ellie Hendrickson, landscape architect with Catherine Herman Design. So we have been before the zoning board of appeals. We were granted variances and a special permit with many conditions. And now pursuant to one of those conditions, we're before you to merge the original three lots in order to create an open space preserve to be held by Kingfisher, which is a charitable foundation. And the property will be subject to a conservation easement in favor of Westchester Land Trust, which owns a property adjacent on one side and is the beneficiary of a conservation easement of a property held by the town on another side. So reports have been issued from staff. We have reviewed them carefully. Tony Grau and Ellie Hendrickson are there to go through and show how we have complied with all of the conditions that remain open, or how we will comply with all of the conditions. So if I could ask Tony to take over and maybe share his screen and show you what we're talking about.
Thank you.
So as you can see, so far, what we're seeing is the original subdivision outlined in white. The three lots we're talking about are outlined in black. The one at the top is also outlined in black. It's a little hard to see. Those are going to be combined. All of that area to the right of it is the area dated to the town subject to a conservation easement to the Westchester Land Trust.
John, the parcels directly to the west and directly to the south that are in white, are they developed or they undeveloped at this point?
On this particular outline, it's a little harder to see because it doesn't show you the development. It just shows you the parcels. So it doesn't show you the new street that's, that's been built, the cul-de-sac, and the outlines of the other lots. I think Tony is getting that together and will be ready to talk about it.
Sorry.
I think, yes, Tony's with us.
I'm with you. Sorry. This is the plat. This is the plat which shows the, which lines to be removed. Done by Inside Engineering.
So is Lot One now developed?
Yes, Lot One is developed. That's, that's the lot over here. I can. Yeah, so this lot is developed.
And Lot Five has been developed also?
Lot Five is right here. It's in the process of being developed. The Common Drive South comes down here.
Right.
And then comes through here. So this is five, six, seven, and eight. Eight's developed. Seven, nine, yeah, I think it's in the process. Six is and five is in the process. I think only eight and six have a CO at this time. And one, one's an older lot.
And four?
Four is undeveloped, three is undeveloped, and two is undeveloped. That's our lots.
Yep.
Yeah, this is four, three, and two. Let's bring up the proposed condition plan. So this is the, the existing pavement which was done by the previous developers, which we're looking to rip out, tear it all out, and do grass pavers with concrete pavers for the tire tracks because the town still has to maintain this water main, which loops around a bittersweet. The middle track will be grass. And we're going to geo web the side tracks, the shoulders, and also plant grass within that.
So that water main will continue to service, what, lots five, six, seven, and eight?
Yes, that water main does service and then it loops around and goes to Bittersweet and then feeds that side of part of town. The upper portion of the Common Drive North, we're going to get removed completely. And it'll be planted with grass and it'll be mowed to provide a trail through it. This water main, which served, which was meant to service Lot Two, Three, and Four, will be removed. And we've already started the process with the Health Department and Bob can contest. I've been working with him on that as well. The drainage we will leave in place because the drainage patterns have changed with the earthworks. And we're providing a turnaround at the top so the town trucks can turn around when they're servicing the water main. Now, this is the parking lot that's, we, we designed along Common Drive South that has the four spaces and a backup area. If I could just zoom. That is in this location off of Common Drive South. So this is where they'll enter the trail. Oops, sorry. Yeah. And I think that was it.
So Tony, we've got a lot of comments
Yeah.
from the staff. Could you give a quick hit on those, please?
I'll give a, I'll give a hit on some of the bigger items. You know, a lot of it was plan changes, adding notes, revising. But the big items, and I'll just go through them really quick, was NC1 that we need to prepare a SWIP due to the parking lot.
Tony, Tony, forgive me for interrupting, but could you do me a favor by zooming out to the overall property?
Sure.
We could, while we discuss. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So one of the comments was to provide a SWIP considering we're doing all the work of removals and we're creating the parking lot. Now, a SWIP was provided at the beginning of the project. We will be revising that SWIP to include this new parking lot. And additionally, we're going to be providing Bob with the calculations of the stormwater, which do not create an issue because we are removing almost the, the impervious conditions. And even adding that gravel parking lot is not throwing, you know, is not overpowering the system that's there in place now. The other thing is to get a no objection letter from the DEC, DEP, for this work. I've been in contact with them. They said that they've never really seen anything like this, but it shouldn't be a problem. I just have to submit the plans with a letter. And I get great feedback from them about restoring the property, removing the impervious surface. And the final item was getting the, the Health Department's approval on the removal of the water main. I've been in contact with Tony Cunney from the Health Department, who doesn't see it to be an issue. And I'm working with Mr. Seoli to put together a letter and submit that with our plans and a letter from us to get the okay for that.
I'd like to give Ellie a chance to talk about some of the landscaping issues, but I think the summary in both cases is going to be, as you know from many applications, there are a lot of conditions attached before we get to final approval. So we're working on conditions. And we assume you will probably add conditions if you approve this subdivision. And so it's a, it's an ongoing process. Ellie, can I ask you to unmute yourself and talk about some of the issues that are more on the landscaping side?
Well, so Dennis and I have been in contact and going over some of the items, one of which was invasive, invasive species management program, which we've actually had in place for a couple of years now, trying to get rid of some of the bad invasives in a really strategic way. So we have reviewed those practices and and we've actually made some great progress with some of the, like mugwort, for example, which we had been taking over a lot. You know, as some of you may remember, this, this lot has, had been left abandoned for quite some time. And so the ability for invasive species to come in was, was great, but we have been managing them, you know, on, on the side, just doing our due diligence with the landscape and the existing conditions to, to make it a healthy ecosystem. We have also, you know, I spoke with Dennis as well as one of his comments in letter was about the soils and the grasses based on the specifications that were mentioned in these alternative paving options, which Tony mentioned was the GeoWeb and the turf, the concrete turf block, the grass pavers. Both of these products have a similar, a similar way to be installed, and we would be using a similar soil mixture and a drought tolerant, low maintenance grass blend in the areas along the drive and in the mown path area. And then we're right in the, in the upper path, we will be using, right, so there, there is the enlargement of the roadway surface. As Tony mentioned, we have the GeoWeb on the side and then the grass strip in the middle, using the two different paving products or reinforcement products, I should call them. And the exterior will be seeded and so will the interior and with the same, same method, same soil mixture and seed. And then if, Tony, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling to the other upper path, where we will be removing the roadway completely, we will be using where the lighter green hatch is. That will be the same restoration meadow mix that was used in the upper meadow, which was done a couple, a few years ago at this point, and then the same best view blend, that is the low maintenance grass blend that it needs. It does, it needs infrequent mowing. It doesn't, it's not a very tall grass, but it's also drought tolerant, so we're looking for good species. So that will be low maintenance and in keeping with the other, other site features. So I think, I think that about covers the extent of the real landscape improvements in terms of soil and the things that, that we're, we were addressing with Dennis.
And What kinds of, what kinds of maintenance might be, regimen might be required for the roadway? That's going to be reserved for the town use for, you know, getting to the water lines. Does that require much? And if so, who will do that? Is that going to be a town obligation or the, the parks obligation? How will that work?
Well, the two, I'm just going to say one thing about the, the roadway material in general. The area that has been designated as the, the two tracks that, that will be the turf stone material, but we would be filling it with an aggregate and concrete so that it doesn't allow weed growth, but it is more minimal than the previously installed asphalt. The reason we're doing, so we, we have that in the middle as well, and then the GeoWeb system on the sides just for the extra support if needed, although, you know, the nine foot width is really all this necessary for a vehicle to pass, but we wanted to ensure that basically we are keeping the, this disturbance in general and these alterations are occurring within the same exact footprint of the existing roadway. So we wanted to ensure that there was, you know, enough width of roadway that the town has been used to with a reinforced surface.
Robert? Great, terrific.
Robert, can I interject something here?
Sure.
That's a good point you brought up. That Common Drive Way will always be privately owned and maintained. However, with a new type of system they're putting in there, they should prepare, I think, a declaration which is going to memorialize the obligations that they will have to keep that clean of debris to fill in, because those types of systems are notorious to get filled in after so many years. So I would recommend, I didn't put in my memo, but they should prepare a declaration so that whoever responsible to clean that out, which requires vacuuming every so often and cleaning, because if they don't, it's going to defeat the whole purpose of what they're trying to do. So that's a good point, Robert.
I agree.
Okay, it does happen.
Yes, yes, they should, they should provide a maintenance schedule.
Good point.
And it was a good point. You brought it up and I just wanted to enlighten you a little bit on it. So they should prepare a new declaration for that again, if filed, so they are responsible for it. It's always private property.
Thank you, Bob.
So, Mr. Chairman, that truly what we have to say. What we're hoping tonight is to have you set up a public hearing. Any other questions that we could ask? Answer?
I don't know. Sabrina, do you want to run, you had a memo. Do you want to run through any questions or comments that you might have that we have not addressed?
Um, no, I think, you know, basically I based my memo off of the conditions that were in the special permit approval issued by the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, I'm pretty sure that most everything, if it hasn't been satisfied, is in the process of being satisfied in accordance with the timeframes as noted in the special use permit approval. You know, Bob also reviewed a lot of that and, you know, it's already set out from a temporal standpoint. As the applicant indicated there before you, based on the requirements of that special permit. And I think that it is prime to set the public hearing if the board feels comfortable with that. As far as seeker, it was a coordinated review with the zoning board. So all of that has been taken care of. So it's a matter of your board feeling comfortable to act on the applications before you.
Okay. Dennis, are you here? Did you have any comments or questions?
Sure. Just to reiterate, I guess what Ms. Hendrickson was saying, yes, I, I know we had spoken prior to today, I guess, with regards to, and I think I was just commenting on something I read with, you know, with respect to this ongoing, you know, invasive species. I didn't know if it was a plan or a program or, you know, so I guess that's kind of like an artifact comment, which I think led to the image that we're looking at now, which is, I just felt that it would, to aid that plan and our program, that you may just want to remove pavement because I don't think that would, you know, it's, it's not helpful based on, you know, some of the studies I provided. So, and then to this drawing now that we're looking at, you know, the two products are obviously, you know, came with different specifications. But as her and I were discussing today, I mean, I think at the end of the day, there is a bit of a mix and marriage here because, you know, you're looking at a cell product or that, you know, compound eye insect look, so to speak, and then it has to be infilled with, you know, something that sells if you're expecting grass growth and application of a contractor who's actually out there doing the work and laying this out. As long as it's a consistent approach, one way or the other, you know, with respect to what they have included on, on Sheet Eight, the one product and or the other, I mean, it should, it should work for, for just, you know, you're just worried about grass at the end of the day. And if not, I mean, I think in consideration of the proposal and the program and who's taking custody, I, you know, I'm sure troubleshooting would not be that big, big of an issue. So that kind of gets those out of the way. And then just with respect to the trees, the first one that I had comments on was just more of documenting as, as we typically do. I think I made a similar comment on maybe one of the brandy wine lots as far as, you know, just to make sure that we use two and a half inches when we start doing the factor to determine, you know, number of replacement trees. And, you know, I was willing to, you know, as consistent with the code and consideration of the diameters that you're removing, you know, you only have to replace 25%. I mean, at the end of the day, because of the minimal amount of removals, it doesn't really change the replacement requirements, or I wouldn't imagine that it would change, you know, your plans to replant the, the two trees that you're going to replant. And I just thought that I would make mention of the relocated trees, which I understand, you know, why that has to happen. But since they're sort of tied in with all the other trees that are planted along that Common Drive with respect to the subdivision proper, obviously that's, you know, going to be a condition that, you know, if those trees don't survive, we would, you know, obviously require replanting. And, you know, I would imagine that, you know, whoever the current owner, proprietor, responsibility for the trees that are currently on the driveway, you know, as long as I don't receive any objection, which I can't imagine I would, and you're willing to take custody of those relocations and subsequent care, I have no, no issue with that.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Bob, did you have any other comments? Bob Shilly, that is, any other questions or issues? I think the applicants, the big ones, but were there any other things that you wanted to emphasize or make mention of?
One of the items with the roadway, obviously they're taking out all the pavement that used to go into a collection system on the east side of the Common Drive. It's going to be all gravel now. It's going to be infiltrating, but it's going to go down to a hard surface. So basically, to make a long story short, I'm going to require them to do a hydraulic analysis on that whole driveway to make certain that the underdrain system will be able to sustain and carry and be ample storage to convey all the water into the existing drainage structures. Because the last thing I want to do is have this not work and have all the water empty out onto the bottom where Cynthia Court is, which will be a dedicated road, which would be an icy nightmare. So I just want to make certain they cover all the bases and do a proper hydraulic analysis to make certain all this water is picked up and conveyed and, and put into the stormwater basins where it was going when it was paved. So that was one of my bigger items. Some of the smaller items are basically, they have to prepare cost estimates for the inspection fee and performance bond. Also too, some of the easements will have to be abandoned on this map because they will no longer be in purpose and use. And those are pretty much the items I have, but that was the biggest item with the hydraulic analysis. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Comments from board members, questions?
Yes. First, I have a question actually for Sabrina. In your memo, you refer to the, to the property now as what it will be a single family parcel consisting of 11.74 acres. Just that, that terminology is a single family parcel. Since it's not a, I mean, is that just how we refer to properties that are in residential zoning districts?
Yes. This zoning district is a single family residential zone. The applicant has a special use permit, which doesn't change the zoning, but allows the use they are proposing.
Sure. So we just still call it a single family parcel, even though it's not a residential use?
Correct.
Okay. So to the applicants, I want to say, you know, this is obviously great. I love it. I think we were all in favor at the time. I was, you know, a little tough when this appeared before us last time about the parking, but I, I, I love what I see and I think it's going to be well-used and, and the turnaround looks great too. It makes sense to me. So I was very happy to see that. And the only question I have is, so the surrounding land that is town-owned land that is, has the, the land trust easement, is that publicly owned, excuse me, publicly accessible land or no?
It's our understanding from conversations with the Westchester Land Trust that there's some kind of a holdup, which we don't understand, between the town and the land trust. It certainly is, it's our understanding that it will be publicly accessible. And it's our intention that the arrangement that we make with the Westchester Land Trust is going to essentially combine the two properties. So it's one large piece of open space available to the public.
So you do anticipate some sort of trail link between the two properties?
To, to the extent that, that the Westchester Land Trust wishes to establish trails, absolutely. I, I just can't promise what they're going to do. We have trails and if they want the link, yes, we will.
Great. I mean, that sounds marvelous to me. Hopefully that can come to fruition. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I just have a question about the Westchester Land Trust, that property when this, this all gets resolved with the town. Did you just, did you just mention that the, the, the intention was for Kingfisher essentially to, to join the property with the, then with the, with the Land Trust? Was there going to be a donation of this property or it just mean that the uses would be compatible? And, and that, that the purpose would be for the joining would actually be just public use across boundaries?
I want to admit that we're, yeah, public use across boundaries. The adjoining piece is town-owned. Our piece will be owned by Kingfisher Philanthropies. In both cases, the land trust has the conservation easement. So we have to work out the details, but it's certainly anticipated that there will be a great deal of cooperation and general use by the public.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Dick Canon?
I did have one question about the invasives. Yeah, I, I know that once property like this gets disturbed, it sort of opens a door for invasives to come in and to, to begin to establish themselves. And I assume that part of that is the invasives is, is associated with the roadways that were built. I could be wrong about that. But once, it sounds as though you said that, that you're in the, in the continuing process of trying to deal with the invasives and take them out. Are you using any replacement species of plants in order to stabilize the environment? So the invasives have a more difficult chance to get back in? What's the, what's the process there?
So mostly invasives usually happen during disturbance. So that is how they got there to begin with. There was all that as disturbance and, and created an unhealthy ecosystem and the opportunity for weeds. When the soil was exposed, that's when weed seeds come in very, very easily and spread rapidly. In our work to restore the site and, and other, other restoration work that I personally have done, and we, we've actually have a consultant that's helping with, with this restoration, is that if the, if the disturbance is minimized and things are left actually, and you have removed most of the invasives, the opportunity for native species and existing healthy, I guess, adapted species that are beneficial are able to thrive once you get rid of the weed species. And they will then take over, limiting the amount of opportunity for invasives to come back. Once you get rid of the weed species and they will then take over, limiting the amount of opportunity for invasives to come back. However, we do, um, periodic checks to manage this and have been since the summer or the fall of 2019. So we've already got a, a couple of years in to, um, um, managing the invasives and checking on them. And, um, some of them are just simply removed by hand and, and where we have done so. Or just we, we cut regularly, like in different seasons, we've, we've done some mowing. And again, mowing down a, a weed and taking away its, its foliage and its ability to, to thrive gives the opportunity and the advantages to the native plants. There's also native, um, you know, seed banks that are still, um, uh, active and, and viable that once they are given the right environment or the weeds are gone, they can also take off and spread. So it is our intention to monitor the invasives, but with a, um, a pretty, uh, aggressive, removal upfront and it, and then just monitoring it over time to reduce them over time. And this, they, the, the invasives get smaller and smaller and smaller. And the native species are able to, to thrive and come back as they should.
Okay, thank you.
I may add to that. Um, we've done also some small, um, native plantings. There was a girl, a local Girl Scout or Girl Award project was to come in and, and build a native garden along, um, the roadside, um, on the private part of the road. Um, we also have a, a section in, in the meadow that, um, that we're planning this spring to put some more native plantings in. So that's, um, the beginnings of those efforts in that regard. And then in direct answer to your question about, um, how the invasives took hold. Yes, a, a road was built, um, you know, uh, but in addition, the lots were partially cleared. Um, an excavation happened and that while, while it was owned by the preceding, um, developer and that was left fallow, um, while the developers', um, you know, business situation deteriorated. So it was that, you know, substantial, um, excavation and, um, tree felling and, um, and, uh, ground disturbance that led to, um, you know, a, you know, a, a significant invasive issue on the property.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Uh, can I just add, um, can I just add one comment?
Yes, Jennifer, yeah.
That's, um, to the extent, um, I know there was discussion in one of the memos, I think Sabrina's memo about possible amendments to the clearing and grading limit line from the prior second meeting map. To the extent there are going to be any modifications to that clearing and grading limit line, I recommend that those get incorporated onto the lot merger map, which is going to be the one filed in the, the Westchester County Clerk's office, um, to memorialize those changes. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay. Is that okay, John? Did you hear that? John?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, I saw that, uh, earlier today. Thank you. Okay, uh, if there are no other comments, um, is there a motion to move this forward to a public hearing? I guess we should set, set up a date that you think you can have all this material to us. And perhaps we can also anticipate, um, uh, a resolution at the same time, um, if, if, uh, Bob, Sabrina are comfortable with that.
And, uh, as far as timing goes, we only need the time to, uh, send out the notices of the public hearing. We, uh, we're essentially ready.
Well, do you, you still have to get those letters and whatever from the D E P? I mean, are we, are you close on that?
We're close, but we can't guarantee anything. Uh, so I'm hoping that, uh, you will be willing to make those conditions of your approval. Because after all, once you pass the resolution, we still have to fulfill all the conditions before we submit it to you for, for your signature.
Right, right. So is there such a motion then to move the, uh, application forward to a public hearing on, uh, when would that be? Felicia, would that be the first meeting in April or second, uh, meeting in April?
I thi, I think if you're looking for a resolution to be incorporated with the public hearing, I think we should go to the second meeting in April.
Okay. Fine. Is that okay, John?
Well, we, we are one, we think it's wonderful to have the resolutions. Yes.
Okay. April 20th, okay. So is there a motion moving forward to a public hearing and also to direct staff to draft a resolution for April 20th?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so the motion's carried unanimously. Okay, very good. So we'll see you on, uh, April 20th. Again, echoing Eldad's comment, I think it's just a marvelous, fantastic, uh, uh, application. And we, we wish we had more of these. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we move on to our next item. This is a request for a, uh, extension of time. This is on 16 H R R L L C Faravakio Lot Four. This was an application for a site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, amended subdivision, clearing and grading limit lines, steep slopes and tree removal permit approvals, uh, excuse me, 16 Hollow Ridge Road. So we have the applicant's letter. Jerry, thank you for your letter and filling us in on, uh, what's going on, the details.
Happy to answer any questions. I, I just, uh, I, I stayed on the, on the Zoom conference because I was on the first application as well. Um, but I don't need to take up any of your time unless you have questions.
Any questions? Anyone, uh, Sabrina or Bob? Any issues, questions, problems?
Not at all.
Any questions? Board members on this extension?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the extension that has been requested?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. Stay well.
Yep, you too. Stay well. Our next item is the extension for the Chapel Cross Central School District. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plan, steep slope permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, approval on Button Hook Road and Sabina Road. Did all the, all favorite? Any issues on this, Bob or Sabrina?
Nope.
Okay. Any issues from board members?
Well, what's, I mean, I reviewed the documents and I'm just curious what's taking so long.
Looks like the D E P permits are really holding up the, uh, application at this point. So they had to, had to go to the D E P and, and you can see from the correspondence that was attached, I guess, in January 21, the latest application, there were a number of issues that were, um, that the D E P raised that have got to be cured, uh, before it moves forward with their permits. So we've been done for a while. It's, it's really the D E P that's got some, uh, sadness.
So I, I, I saw that, Bob, and, and, um, uh, you know, the, the, the request for the extension says that, oh, we need time to respond to the D E P. I mean, the comments in the D E P letter are, are pretty extensive, uh, which sort of raises the question kind of what was done beforehand and, and, you know, uh, happy to extend if this is being pursued. Just curious if that's happening.
Sabrina, Bob, any insights on that?
Well, they're asking for the time extension, so I'm assuming that they're pursuing.
Right. I mean, the last extension was for 10 months, right?
Right. There was a hiatus at one point, uh, I'm sorry, Jennifer, I'll get right back to you. There was a hiatus at one point, uh, there was a little bit of publicity about it as well, uh, where the, the school board was trying to, I guess, reconfigure and see what they were doing with this. Um, and there was some time where apparently, um, some of the applications were D E P were laid fallow for a while after our approvals. But I thought from what I understood and read in the papers, et cetera, that the, those things had picked up again. And I guess clearly Jerry has sent materials into Jerry Barrett. So Jennifer, did you have something to say on that? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not on the D E P issue, but that a couple of weeks ago, the attorneys for the applicant did submit to me, um, a whole host of, of easements and other, you know, recordable documents, uh, for review. So they've been working on that part of it as well.
Okay.
So it is moving forward, I guess. You know, they're asking for the extension because they want to keep all of their approvals in line and they're working on stuff.
Makes sense to me.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion then to grant the applicant, the, the, the extensions that they've requested?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we have minutes, um, from our November 17 meeting, uh, to look at. I guess, uh, Canon, you were not there. You were not appointed yet, so you really can't, you can't play on this one.
Okay.
Any questions, changes, comments on any of the, uh, the, um, draft minutes? Okay.
For me.
Yep. Okay. Dick left. Okay. I'll be back. So, uh, is there, are Dick, uh, any questions or issues? Did you see the minutes or all set?
I have those, yeah.
Okay. Great. So Canon can't participate on this, so, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 17?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So the motion carries unanimously. We're all set. So now we move to our, uh, the next part, the, and that is the, uh, discussion on Chapel, Chapel Cross Hamlet rezoning, the form-based code, you know, discussion, review of the proposed form-based code, uh, that we've been working with and struggling on. Obviously, I hope everyone's aware that, um, the, the study has been, um, abbreviated, truncated.
The study has not been abbreviated. The legislative area has been abbreviated.
Okay. So we are, the, the town board is now looking at, uh, studying, uh, well, tell us exactly Sabrina, so I don't mistake. I know that we're looking at North Greeley.
The, the town board is continuing with the environmental review process for the entire study area as set forth in the D G E I S. They have made a commitment to pare back the actual legislation, the form-based code itself, to an area, um, consisting of the North Greeley Corridor, which has yet to be further defined or limited.
Well, uh, not to split hairs here, but that certainly sounds like an abbreviation to me in terms of the, the form-based code and its application to the hamlet. It's going to be a smaller area, so I think that, that, uh, Bob's characterization is probably correct. But I have a, I, which is fine. I mean, I, I have no, I have no qualms up with any of this. Uh, but I do have a question, uh, on the, i- is it, uh, I don't understand. And maybe, uh, Sabrina, you or Nick or somebody or can, can help me with this. The, the, because the, the, uh, the E I S, the, the G E I S will eventually, I presume it's going to get done and finished, um, as, as it should, I believe. That'd be a good thing, applies to one district area. Uh, does, does that, the, the, I assume that that boundary stands for the purposes of the E I S. And then there is another area which, and, and, but to that, uh, geographical area, the form-based code does not apply. It applies to a subset of a geographical area. So in effect, are we, does, does this decouple the G E I S from the form-based code? Because now it's applying to land which is not within the form-based code. And how does that work? Can you have a, a G I, I, I don't quite understand how that, how that works.
John, do you want to take a stab at that? I, I mean, I, I can have, so, so again, we're struggling with, I am struggling with that very issue. And, you know, the environmental impact statement has to, the, the D G E I S, the F E I S, the town board will make its findings and through the findings process, they're going to limit the area of the applicability, uh, with the onset of implementing the form-based code. So they're setting forth the area is a, a start, you know, kind of scaling back the area to start small as a test, if you will. That's what they have indicated. Uh, you know, I can't, trying to build that nexus from the D G E I S through to the finding statement to eventually the code is what we're working on right now.
So it's, it would there be, uh, and I to interpret that once, one conclusion might be that the, the E I S, the G E I S in its entirety would be reviewed and approved. And then, but with regard to development within the form-based code, smaller area, the D G I, that the E I S would be, there'd be a subset of impacts that is pulled out of the E I S and applies to that area. Uh, it's, it's, I don't understand how this, you know, I, I guess I understand how it works. And I, I don't necessarily need to understand it because, you know, this is a matter of law and you guys will figure it all out. I'm, I'm just curious about how this all gets put together in the end. You know, somebody comes in and says, well, now I want to develop on, on, um, South Greeley. And the, the, without the form-based code, under the existing zoning, but the, the, the E I S, uh, thresholds, right? Still apply to the entire area and that person can use as much of, that developer can use as much of the, of the available, the development, um, capacity which exists within the E I S, as long as he doesn't exceed it for the total district, right? And eventually that, that, that capacity, uh, in the best of all possible worlds and there's certain people's, um, view of the future, will eventually, uh, be met, right? Because the town, the hamlet will be developed. Is, is that? Is that how, is that how it works? I mean, I understand this.
No. So if I, if I could just maybe try to bring some clarity to it. And I think, you know, we're still working out a lot of details. But, um, my understanding is that the town board does still wish to study the full district area for the environmental review purposes so that, so that this board and future boards and, you know, that we have that data set, we have those studies as a resource and a tool for the future for whatever that the fate of the rest of the, the downtown of the hamlet is. We, we have those tools and the resources to use. Um, they, you can't develop using those, that data and those resources until there's legislation to support that. So this town board has said, look, as far as what we're going to pursue, as far as legislation goes to amend the zoning code, we're only going to focus on North Greeley right now. We're focusing on North Greeley. Forget about the town-owned land. Forget about South Greeley. Forget about, um, you know, the Upper King Street area. Um, we're just looking at South Greeley. Future town boards can use that data for, for whatever purposes that, that they choose to use that data for. It may require supplements. It may require additional information. But ultimately, you can't develop using that data until there's legislation that goes along with it.
So let me ask, let me just, uh, uh, for clarification purposes, when you say that there is a, uh, a, a data set, right? That, that will, that will, that, that the D G I S process will yield, right? But, uh, you, it sounds as though what you're saying is that the data is, is valuable. I don't disagree with that for a second, but that the E I S will actually not be approved. That this is actually a data, this is a, a data resource, but it's not an E I S that's put into place. Is that right?
There's no approval. It's, um, so the consultants are working on the final environmental impact statement now. So they're working on calling through all of the public comments that have been issued, both at public hearings and in writing and, and preparing responses to that because it's, it's all good, valuable information, right?
Right. So that will, that will yield that, uh,
I think the F D I S will end up being accepted once those responses are in adequate form. And then there'll be a finding statement issued, closing out the secret review process. Then there'll be legislation that, that is adopted once the environmental review process is, is completed. And what the town board is committed to is saying, we're not going to be considering the full, you know, the full gamut of the form-based book focusing on this one geographic area.
No, I, I understand, I understand the process, uh, you know, but the, the only question I had was that the way in which it was being talked. No, I, I understand, I understand the process, uh, you know, but the, the only question I had was that the way in which it was being talked about just now was, just as a data set that was going to be available, but they are planning on going through the F E, F G E I S. And, uh, ev- eventually, if everything squares, approving it and putting that in place.
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
With that, with the F G E I S, when finalized, we have the data, you know, we're talking in terms of it's being available, uh, you know, to the towns and other boards. Would that be available to applicants coming in under current zoning to grab onto the F G E I S and say, hey, I want to use that information to develop under current code? You know, the, what we have right now, uh, in South Greeley, Upper King, et cetera. Uh, is it available then to the applicants as well, once it's approved by the, the town board?
Well, certainly to, to refer to as far as the data goes and to say, you know, for example, if someone wanted to develop under existing code, within existing parameters on South Greeley and say, someone alleged there, there's a sewer capacity issue, they could point to, well, look, you, the town, you just did this study and shows that there, there is adequate capacity or there's not, and this is what we need to do to correct that.
So could it be?
That was my question, so thank you, Bob, for restating it.
Yeah, so in other words, perhaps an applicant could point toward, you know, whatever traffic study was done for Upper King, for example, and use that and perhaps, uh, that might help the developer, uh, move, move an application forward without having to redo all that work, because they could, they could grab onto that and use it.
I think that's fair, I think that's fair.
I, I mean, I don't think that's a bad thing, I think that's, it's a good thing since we're doing all this work.
Right.
Okay. Good questions, very, very complicated, good luck.
I have a question around, I have a question around why did they, why did they decide on this district? I mean, I know that this was sort of the initial point of the study and this is what sort of led to everything. But there are so many different aspects to this, town land being one of them, like, do you, I'm, I'm just curious to know what's the, where they, why have they landed on this, this particular piece first?
I don't think what, we want to be in a position to, to, you know, sit here and speak for the town board. Um, I would say, you know, watch that, their meeting from last week and, you know, I think Ivy goes through a pretty supervisor pool, I should say. Goes through, um, you know, a, a, a pretty long explanation of at least her opinion and, you know, e- everyone kind of chimed in and I, I would rely on.
Okay. Part of that decision-making.
But can I, can I just, uh, clarify, um, I guess it's a question, but, uh, I think I know the answer, but I'm not sure. I think the reason, so the, the G E I S process will continue uh, and it will finish its course, studying the full rezoning area in full, as it should, I think, it makes sense. Uh, a lot of money was spent, a lot of work went into it, and it will be a valuable resource, it becomes a public document, correct? Which is great, um, and so, but, um, supervisor pool suggested um, limiting the actual legislation to the North Greeley area, but that is not, now, this is the part where I, I want to, this is the question. That is, uh, not final, right? They have not voted on anything. Um, uh, supervisor pool doesn't necessarily get to, you know, laterally decide what the legislation is going to be, right? The town board has to decide on, they have to write the legislation, and it's as much a political as it is a policy, uh, process at this point, right? It's, so it's a little bit up in the air, is that fair to say?
I, a little bit, but I, I think there was a consensus, there was a majority of the town board last week that did agree to, to limit it to the North Greeley area.
But not officially, right? I mean, they didn't officially change.
On it, they didn't, on it, they, they agreed.
They, they didn't, they didn't vote on it, it seemed like there was a consensus. I can perfectly well understand that, you know, this is going to take, you know, some, some careful thought. Um, I, I certainly don't, um, hold it against them that they didn't formally decide yet. Uh, it's obviously a, a thorny issue in town, so, uh, you know, I, I find it, uh, I, I don't find it an, an unreasonable conclusion, uh, but it's not for me to say. I will say that, uh, policy and politics are the same thing, I mean, that's the whole, that's how a policy gets made. And, um, there's a reason for that, and there's good reasons for that. So they're going through that process of trying to, I think, trying to figure out what, what's best for the town after going through the, all the public reviews that they've been having. It's, it's a tough thing, um, and I have the confidence that they're, they're probably going to come up with, I think, the right thing. I, I personally think that it's an interesting exercise, uh, to take a smaller district. And I don't know if they're thinking about it this way, but to take a smaller, uh, district within the larger, uh, hamlet, uh, designated area and almost use it as sort of a test case, I mean, you know, let's put this in place for, uh, two, three years, let's wait. Let's, let's let this be our legacy and see what happens, and there was reference to future town boards, I think, in the meeting. Let's, let's just see what happens, and future town boards can decide whether the form-based code, um, is finally approved by this town board is useful, whether it's productive of what we learn from it. Uh, do we want, you know, do they want to, you know, amend it, change it, make it better? And then expand it back into some portions of the larger, a larger boundary or not. And it's, it's not just, obviously, the town board deciding these things, it's the public deciding whether, hey, you know, this isn't so bad after all. So I, I, to me, it seems like a, sort of a reasonable, a reasonable step. I'd also like to suggest that North Greeley, um, without prejudice to any property owners, uh, any tenants, um, it just seems to me that that part of the hamlet is one which probably because I think the impediments to development are not as, um, as great that, uh, maybe that's, that's the area which, uh, which maybe, you know, needs development most and can handle it best.
I agree.
So, you know, maybe, you know, that, you know, I, I think that there might be some greater wisdom in all of this.
I, I agree, I agree, I, you know, I, I don't know anything about architecture, but I know what I like when I see it. Um, I sort of paraphrase that from a philosopher. So I think it's a good, a good way to set an example, see if we like the, the type of buildings, we like what happens to, uh, parking and all the other features. And it gives the, uh, future town boards an opportunity to say, hey, we've got it squared away, this is wonderful. Or we should make changes, should make it better.
It's definitely a good precedent and a good test case, but I do, where I am sort of struggling is, is sort of the choice of, and I think you answered that, maybe it's the least problematic piece of land that is within the district right now. But really speaking, the big question that needs to be solved is, how are you going to deal with the public land, right? The town-owned land, and that's where, um, I mean, it, this, this sort of, maybe this is too early to get a, jump into that study, but that's where I think that this, this sort of model would have helped. And as far as I understand, they talked about some sort of charrettes to run for the plant, is that right? In the ne- in the, in the near future for other town boards, isn't that?
For other town boards to?
Supervisor pool invited, you know, the next town board to, to start that process of, um, you know, doing a charrette specifically focused on the development of town-owned land.
You know, I, I will observe if I, if I, again, I, I know I don't speak for the whole board on this because we have yet to deliver a memo, uh, on the form-based code. But we have had this conversation o- ongoing for months now on this board about the town-owned land. And, you know, what's the right process for that?
Right.
And, um, I, I thought that we were, we were sort of leaning into a conclusion that this is, whatever is done now with respect to the town-owned land, it ought to open the door for further study, for what ought to happen there.
Yeah.
And, uh, the, the fact that, um, I, I, the fact that the E I S is going to continue to deal with and, and, um, uh, come to conclusions about the town-owned land and the, the, determine what the capacities are of, of all these things. Uh, we, I, I thought we were headed to saying, well, you know, that's a good, that's a good thing, because that's, you know, checking one of the boxes without being specific about what actually will be developed there, without being specific about what the parcel lines are and where the streets are and what the land use is. And that would be something that, that probably ought to be done in some other process. We talked about a master developer or consultant comes in, uh, you know, charrette is certainly a, a valid way to go about it. Um, so I, I think that, that, um, this is making a lot of sense to me. And I think that they, that they believe that because of the reaction of the people in town, um, that, um, you know, a public charrette is the way to, um, to resolve it.
It can, can, you know, I, I, I think that these are all really helpful comments, um, you know, but again, I think it's important that we, we kind of go back around, talk about the actual code and your comments to the town board on that code. Um, you know, and kind of refocus that, you know, I, I think that, that supervisor pool was very clear and the other town board members wanted to put off the process for town land for another board to deal with in whatever form it may be. But that, it, it's not their intent to be dealing with that now, other than to include the, the analysis that is within the environmental impact statement.
Right, I thought our statement, uh, in our draft that I threw up and that Tom made some changes to, I thought that captured again, uh, the consensus that we had reached on the town-owned land, which was, it should be included in the E I S study. Take advantage of the E I S study, that as currently formulated and proposed, the form gate-based code uh, had sufficient flexibility in it for future development of the town-owned land. But before anything is done in any concrete way, in terms of rezoning or anything else for the town-owned land, I thought our consensus was that, our strong recommendation was that a master plan, a master study should be undertaken of town-owned land in the hamlet. And, uh, I think that's, I think that's what we've been saying, and I think that's, I think that's an appropriate, and I think even helpful of, of piece of support to give to the town board to say, you know, we, we think you're right on this, uh, include it. But at the same token, we've really got to do, as Tom said, we have to have another, another, a process for this, because it has not been looked at. And I think what the E I S told me, and what our study with the F B C has told me, informed me, is that, um, it is a critical piece, and before you start committing that town property, you need to better understand uh, all of the possibilities, uh, the potential, the constraints. And, uh, there have been changes that are going on right now, even as we speak, in terms of how we live and how we work, how we commute. And all these things need to be better understood, I think, uh, to maximize the potential of that, uh, of that property.
So, uh, to the extent that, um, there was some, some, uh, hiccup in our process where we had, um, canceled a meeting on this subject. And the, the, the suggestion, I think, was that we needed to hear from council or we need to hear from somebody about what, how we should pre- proceed, uh, given this, um, change in direction. Uh, is there any, is there, is, is there any reason for us to, to, to stop or slow down or wait? Or should we just proceed? What should we do here?
Well, you're at the point right now where you're doing a review of the propos- a memo on the proposed code. The understanding that the town board is looking to change the area that that proposed code would apply to, I think that's, you know, the only piece of information that has changed. Everything else within the code right now stands, and so your review is still relevant, except for perhaps the area. And that is something that, you know, you need to decide, you know, I, I'm hearing you support that. Um, you know, and, and I guess, you know, filling out the rest of your comments on the code. The, the information that was submitted, uh, to everybody from Bob Kirkwood and then edited by Tom was compiled into one word document that I had Felicia circulate to all of you. There were, um, there was additional information needed on affordable housing, based on your previous conversations. Um, and the question is, is there anything else that you want to include in that? Um, you know, in my read of the information, there was a lot of reference to the, to the D G E I S. I wanted to change that reference, because you're now talking about the proposed code. Um, but really, that's where your comments focus. And then I would also want you to include something in that memo that reserves your ability to comment again when you see a revised draft of the legis-
That makes good sense.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think we can, I mean, from my perspective, I think that town-owned land, the comments that we have here in the draft, we can, you know, wordsmith it, whatever, but I think those are still pertinent, I still think those are on target. I think the comments that we have made and, and, uh, proposed to, uh, suggest to the town board regarding the processing of land use applications, I don't think that changes. I don't know what to say about parking, because I think parking becomes a very, very different situation, we're looking at a very small area. Uh, the parking constraints, if we're not going to use the major town parking lot, I don't know what to say. I, I, I think the, uh, much of the E I S is, uh, becomes, uh, less relevant. And I think parking, uh, kind of you throw it up in the air again, where are we? If you're just going to look at, at that area, um, you know, we, we made the comment that we need a block-by-block study. Well, it's only one block, so what are we doing? And where are the parcels, where the, uh, do we make a recommendation? I mean, we saw once, uh, for the benefit of Eldad and, and, uh, Canaan, you know, Tom Curly put together some, uh, some sketches and some, uh, some things for that area a couple of years ago. And the parking was really onsite, it was basically decks, uh, either underground or at the rear of those properties. You make a comment about that, that, uh, should be self-enclosed, or you figured it out in those kinds of ways? Or do we not comment on parking at all?
The, the, the code talks about parking, the closure of parking.
Right.
Um, one of the things, y- you know, you have already recommended a block-by-block analysis through the, through the D G I S. I S, right? So the question is, do you have comments as to how parking would be handled? Now, it talks about, um.
Well, if we're not going to use the big parking lot, we're going to need more smaller, maybe more parking structures. I mean, the proposal that, to meet the parking regs, you're going to need more structures in that small little area. And that seems to me not to make a whole lot of sense.
So Bob, can I maybe, uh, I, I'm not sure that the parking, uh, unless the town board comes back in their next version of the, uh, form-based code, unless I'm mistaken, all of those parking strategies, right? That are in the current form-based code, including the ones like a remote parking within a mile distant, right? Unless I'm mistaken, uh, at this point, all of those recommendations for parking strategies, all of those provisions, right? For part of the provisions in the code, uh, still stand. And even though it's a, it's a smaller area, all of those, that, that toolkit would still exist within the code, so.
What I'm going to say is, I believe it still stands as well, but I say that with a caution, because we have yet to really drill down and understand how much of the code will remain versus not.
So, uh, right, so, but, uh, right, and I understand that, so there will be revisions to the code, I think that there will be. I mean.
Yes, absolutely.
Why we have drafts. And, and so our comments on these things are comments that go to revisions to the, to the, to the draft in a final. Um, yes, I imagine that they are going to change, and I imagine that they're going to change based on a hard look at what the code says on all those parking, uh, provisions and strategies. And it is not only appropriate for us to comment into that process, but necessary for us to comment into our process, into that process. I don't see where, where any of our comments would necessarily change except that maybe there's some specific observations that, for instance, Bob just brought up about this smaller area, right? I don't know what they would be, um, whether some of these strategies really don't, wouldn't apply, right? Because it's such a small, a small area, we no longer have the abet- the ability, uh, unless I'm mistaken. Although that's, uh, to use the, the parking lot, the commuter parking lot, although I don't think that that's true either, the town could any, at any time. Right? Utilize that lot and change. Right? Utilize that lot and change. So I think that I think our comment on the strategies. Still stand on that sort of that toolkit that's in the the form based code. I think all those comments still stand because those, all those things are still in the code.
Yeah, my difficulty here is. We now have a very small scope of area, so prop, and we don't know. How much of the code will remain? So my question is, what exactly, uh, how are we trying to be useful? It's one thing to say, we're coming up with saying, here's your toolkit and here are the strategies and here's what we think is good or bad. But I think the overarching, at least in my head, the form based code was about, how do we imagine? Sort of a bigger hole, right? So I understand that you can go from a small, you know, from sort of working inside out. To to get into a larger, you know, implementing those strategies, but how do we be useful? To really speak specifically to this lot and this area of North Greeley. Uh, rather than just sort of commenting on the larger code, especially if you don't know how much of that is going to remain anyway.
But it's our job to, it's, I I think it's.
No, I agree, but I just don't.
If I can, uh, it's it's our, for example, um, it's it's our responsibility, I think, to. To uh, review, uh, what is in the form based code. Not only for the whole thing, but also for North Greeley. Right? And all those provisions in the code for the for the district still. Apply in North Greeley. I mean, the ones that are there on that diagram and all of those those drawings and all that text. It still applies to North Greeley. And um, so it seems to me that if that is going to change. This is the process which is instituted for um. For us to actually comment on that so that our comments to that can get rolled into. The next version of this. Yeah, I don't know, for instance, if. The the most expeditious thing for them to do, I think, would be to go to, go to do a final form based code based on the comments they get. And then have their meetings based on that and its public review of that and then legislate. I mean, I I.
For this little further north Greeley, just for that part of it.
So I.
Question is, should our comments be more specific to that? It, you know, not just the, you know, should we be more specific exactly as? Bob was mentioning is, okay, there are smaller lots. There are other things that we should consider in terms of. Uh, housing, for instance, right? If you're talking about different type of housing, I, you know, what are we? Are we saying, yes, bring in affordable housing? What kind of housing? Like, that's the kind of thing that I'm, I'm struggling with in terms of. Giving more feedback on this because it's not the large piece. Is it replicable at the small level? And if it's not, are we talking about it slightly different? Are we giving them slightly different information or or? Guidelines on what kind of housing or is it like, that's what my, that's my trouble. I I can't.
So I think, I think it's a legitimate question, Conan, um, but um, there's a couple of points to me that that. About this that make it seem relatively straightforward, actually. One is, we can only go based on the information that we have, right? And right now, what we have is that the rezoning area is changing, uh, it's shrinking. Um, and um, nothing else that we know of is specifically changing. Now, there are always going to be changes in the code from what was originally proposed. Um, and part of our comments was in in service of making those changes better. Um, so one of the questions was, should town on land be included or not? Which is this bigger question of what should the rezoning area be? Well, it sounds like that's been somewhat decided, great. But uh, other areas of comments was processed. We've talked about it. We think we have language that we're pretty comfortable with. I don't think that changes based on the. The size of the zoning area, uh, you know, another was uh, design and architecture. I think that's as relevant for the smaller area as it was for the larger area. Um, another one was affordable housing. Um, relevant, although I do understand your point about how. If you're talking about a block versus ten blocks, it could be different comments, but. Um, we just can only go by what we know, but the other piece of this, um, is that. You know, we have to take, again, the information that's out there, which is this is likely to be a significantly reduced geographic scope, fine. But if this is to be a pilot, a sort of test. Um, we'd like to make the legislation as good as possible to make the test be as successful as possible. So that this can then be expanded, uh, from my perspective, uh, this, uh, you know, I I. It's no secret that I support uh, the idea of a larger area, you know, downtown Hamlet wide uh, rezoning. Um, you know, obviously with modic modifications that we had been talking about, but um, so if. This is to be a pilot, let's make it as, give it the best chance of being as successful as possible, and that requires us. Helping uh, the town board craft the best code possible, uh, and one final thing on that is. You know, talking to different kinds of people and thinking about this, you know, I worry that perhaps our comments on the E I S. While I stand behi- behind them, they might have come across as like, and I think I've said this before, as, you know, sort of too critical, maybe. Not as supportive as it could have been, and you know, I feel like the town board needed more support. Um, I do think that our comments uh, on the F B C as it stands now. And I do appreciate the opportunity to make comments once we see actual final legislation, because right now we're just commenting on theory. Um, not a potential uh, legislation. Um, but I do think our comments should be. Um, I don't know that we need to get too detailed. We don't have to write the legislation, but I think we should be a lot more straightforward and say. Affordable housing, we think X uh, process, we think it should be more greater the same, you know, like, we, I think we should be a little bit more forceful. And and sort of direct and straightforward than detailed and then. You know, it can be read uh, sort of as too critical and not um, supportive and and clear enough.
Well, I I think that that's, I I agree with all that, um, I I also wonder if. It, because the town owned land was such a a big thing, right? It's sort of gobbled up a lot of the, a a lot of the oxygen in this whole. And um, the the smaller areas, the sort of. Outlying areas within this tiny hamlet like North Greeley, for example, um, sort of didn't get that much attention. Right? The intersection of Greeley and uh, what is it Bedford Road up there? Uh, didn't get that much, not Greeley King, sorry, uh, upper King, did not get that much attention in in our view, at least. From my eyes, anyway, I didn't, didn't really give it that much attention. So maybe in this particular case, um, it would be useful. Uh, and helpful, uh, now that we are looking at a a more specific area. That maybe there's a finer grain look at it. Uh, you know, a little bit more attention to, well, do those buildings setbacks, right? The build few lines, do they really make sense for this part of town? Right? I mean, the 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 setback for ground floor residential, right? In a Hamlet kind environment is something that that really needs to be looked at pretty carefully. Because if you're too close to the sidewalk, it's not a, it's it's not a good residential unit to be on the ground floor. There are, there are, there is sort of the next level of detail that maybe we could bring to it. I think that's one of Canaan's uh, uh, thoughts here. That maybe we can not only address the larger text, but get a little bit deeper into it, uh, in order to be helpful.
Yeah, and not, not so much. No, sorry, I was gonna say, not so much on the, necessarily on the architectural language, but. So one of my concerns would be, okay, we're talking about housing and I'm thinking about it from that perspective, right? And if we're talking about what kind, what we're, and it's a good piece to talk about because that's something we haven't written so far, right? Is what kind of housing, what 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 is the different types of uh, housing units that we are going, we are. We want to talk about specifically for this region being different than. As you said, in the center of town and on the town owned land, right? So if we are talking about this piece, are we? I think it makes sense to sort of set a language that can be then replicated for other pieces of pro. As they expand the study area, but right now, if we're talking about this area, we should make specific. Recommendations when it comes to the type of housing that needs to get built. Um, or the ver, you know, the various type of units we would like to support, bringing in and and what's the language of. You know, being cohesive and not creating sort of disparity if we're bringing in affordable housing, that kind of language. And I think that's very different for North uh, North Greeley than it is for the rest of it, rest of the space in. At least in my eyes, and so that's, that's where I'm, yes, we should be, I think, more specific. To some recommendations, there is broader recommendations, but then there is specific recommendations for this area. For every.
Well, you know, remember, this this area had different requirements in terms of commercial and retail, remember? And so it it seems to be, and and other people have made this comment before, and I think that frankly, this this subset makes a great deal of sense. I think the comment was made by the supervisor that this is almost like a more realistic area that is. Asking for some help and some development, look, you know, we have that abandoned pharmacy uh, lot down there, which is. You know, there are all kinds of inquiries about it, and you know, it's it's something that should be and 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 will be developed at some point, so. Having some, uh, having an oar in the water on that would really be helpful. But I think the the issue is, you know, to Tom's point, I think relooking, if we're going to look at this area, now what do we do? Are we gonna make this area the area that we all kind of feel it's flat, it's level, it's the area that's sort of. You know, if you had to start all over the town, that's where the town would be. Lower King in that area would be your commercial area. It's walkable. You don't have to go up that big hill. You don't have to be catapulted up King Street. Um, you don't have this wide open space where you have to uh, risk your life crossing the 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 road. Uh, coming there at the, that's at the um, the bridge. So it it has that area which kind of begs for that kind of development where you can really get that cohesive village feel.
Yep.
So is that something, again, I think, uh, it was an area that did not mandate the same degree of commercial. Ground floor development, so maybe that's something we take a look at and change. Maybe the housing mix changes, and again, yes, we have this toolbox uh, for parking. That we use and looked at with certain suppositions. It's just seems to me that the caveat that we need to be adding here. Is to the extent that we change the density of development and setbacks and the mix. Um, some of these tools have got to be relooked at and they have to understand, we all have to understand that we have to be flexible. As we, as we move toward this more um, narrow scope. So I I agree, I mean, maybe the setbacks have to be different. That area right now has a feel that it's tighter and closer. Then then down on South Greeley, just because of the way Greeley opens up by the bridge. Uh, is that good, bad, or indifferent? Do you change the setbacks in that area from what has been prescribed? Um, what do we want that area to be? Uh, it seems to me that that could be a very effective commercial retail area with housing mixed in. And then, um, you know, um, and and moving the 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 main street, if you will. And the downtown a little bit further north, um, and keeping most of the retail north of the bridge.
It is a tricky thing, um, the impulse that I have, right? Being, this is sort of what I did for a living when I did something for a living. Um, the, is to actually, you know, drill down, right? And just design the thing. I mean, just get it over with and design it, right? Uh, so there are the impulse in in that vein is to. Address the questions with a little bit more specificity, right? So that the the yield in the end is something that you actually know you're going to get, and you know it's going to be good. Because you've already legislated that to the point where there are really no other options. Uh, I think that that maybe unless I misunderstand. Um, Eldad's point, maybe that gets a little bit too deep into this thing. Uh, I don't, I don't know, you know, how far we need to go, but because it's such a small area. It really is just begging for a solution, which would be relatively easy. To come up with and then formulate into a code which just yields that specific, you know, that specific result. Uh, I, uh, so I, it, it's going to be interesting. What we do here, whether we actually open this up again, right? Because I, we were sort of really close to coming to some conclusions on all of this, I thought. I think we're missing the the affordable housing piece if we're going to have one. Uh, we probably need to have a conversation about architecture. Uh, if we want to have to say anything about architecture, and then there's the whole parking thing that I think we're sort of dancing around still. Uh, I don't know if there's anything else outstanding which we we feel need to comment on. We could. We could finish that up within a couple of weeks and sort of get done with it and then wait for the town board to come back and say, okay. Here's the revised code, right? Here's the final form base code. Now comment on this. Or we could open up the conversation and really drill down now into North Greeley.
Well, we could get, we could uh, draft a memo now and address the issues that we have reached consensus on that we think are going to be consistent, even with the the latest change. I E. Process, uh, town, town land, maybe that's it. And then uh, say, look, we're going to have, now that you've had this, made this change, we're gonna relook at this area. In a, uh, with different eyes and see whether or not, uh, you know, we have different thoughts on on parking, on architecture, bulk and height. Setback, housing mixes, affordable housing, uh, whatever, parking, whatever it might be. Um, I I think that would be appropriate. I think it's also appropriate to get something out to the town board. On those issues that we've reached consensus on, why hold back on it and we think it's going to be consistent no matter what they study. You know, how broad the study is going to be. Um, at this point, that would, that would be my recommendation.
I I, uh, but I, I think I disagree. I think that. That as they look at this thing again and they come to a final, they're gonna, it's gonna be a final, it's gonna be a final, uh, a final draft. That's gonna have parking in it. And so it's gonna, it's gonna be a final, it has everything in it, so.
I I agree, I agree. I I I'm just saying that we get something out now, but we also say, look, in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have. Parking and affordable housing and whatever, uh, now that we're looking at the smaller area, we're just rethinking some of this stuff. Um, again, to be helpful to the town board as they rethink their study and and their legislation. Because I I really think some of the stuff changes.
So Rita, what's what's the timing issue?
Well, well, I want to say there is no timing issue here. You guys already hit that timing benchmark and that was getting your. Your comments on the, on the E I S, right? The the town board has committed to another process when the draft F E I S comes in. And they haven't even, you you would have another opportunity with proposed legislation. Um, when it is proposed after the environmental review is completed. So you don't, you are not stuck right now of uh, within a timeframe to comment. I think that your comments. You know, you have very valuable comments. If you want to set up more special meetings to talk about. Things that may be downsized now and your opinions on that, I think it's, it is definitely appropriate. I don't think you should feel pressure to get something to the town board now. Um, you know, they are working with their consultant team, you know, who are responding to public comment. Um, and other board comments on the, on the E I S, so. You know, there's, there's a lot of work that is underway right now, um. And the results of that work may further inform this board's view on proposed legislation.
So I I would, you know, I I just may respond to that really quickly, uh, just a different view on this. And that is, um, I personally think that echoing some of Eldad's comments. Uh, we've sort of left the town board a little bit adrift because we've been slow on this, et cetera, and the consultants have done the legislation. Um, the consultants have done the legislation and, you know, with all due respect to the consultants, uh, it's a swing and a miss. And the town board now is starting over. And I think, I think that the planning board should really act as a planning board, and I think we should offer thoughts now as part of the legislation process. And get input now. Do we guide it? Do we control it? No, but I think it would be far better for us to be proactive at this point. So I really think there is a little bit of urgency to help the town board. I I I just felt badly for them as they, you know, they got pummeled back and forth by everyone whipped. On it, and it wasn't their document. The consultants put this together and. And you know, then they had to work with it and deal with it, take our comments and the comments from all different boards and people, et cetera. I I think it's the role of the planning board to do planning, and this is planning, and I think this would be a great opportunity for us to take. Some initiative to help, just give some thoughts. I'm I'm not talking about drafting legislation. I'm not talking about. Arguing with the town board on points, but basically saying, here's what we think. Now that you've narrowed the scope. Well, again, to Eldad's point, presuming that they have narrowed the scope, it hasn't really been done officially. But presuming that you've done that, this is what we think, and we think that this. But presuming that you've done that, this is what we think and we think that this would yield a great product. Uh, and here is, here are our thoughts. And, you know, go out there and, and, and tough, you know, maybe, uh, maybe people criticize us, but you know what? Tough, we're a planning board. We should be going out there and I think issuing some, some thoughts and, and some, uh, some ideas.
I, I agree. I think we could, we could send a draft, I would think. To, and say more is gonna be coming and some changes may occur in whether you're officially drafted. You know, this is where we are right now, as you just said, and I think that would help some people. Uh, move whatever they're trying to move forward, move it better. So I, 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 I agree with Bob and with Dick. I actually don't think we're.
Far away, yeah.
Disagreeing very much. I mean, it, it sounds like there's only like two, maybe two sections that we wanna. Um, add some additional comments to, um, that we could probably get done. Um, soon and still be in a position, Baba, I completely agree. I mean, it seems like. Now is, you know, th- this period over the next couple of weeks and months is the period where there's an opportunity to be as helpful as possible. To get, to get this right. Um, and so.
And not just be reactive.
Yes, and so, and so whether we issue sort of part one of the memo and what we've already written now. And then part two or wait, I, I actually don't think that matters all that much. Um, but, uh, to me, it sounds like we have two sections, affordable housing. And sort of design and architecture are still out there. Is, is that fair to say?
I think it might be a little bit more complicated than that, frankly, once we look at this small area. Uh, to Tom's comment, you know, it's, you know, it's an area that, um. There might be some good solutions here, not that we, you know, we necessarily have a monopoly on solutions and maybe we, we. We offer a number of alternatives for them to consider. Uh, let, let the, let the residents consider to get it out there. But you know, we didn't have that in this process. The consultants came up with something as, you know, here's the product, here it is. And people didn't like it. Okay, so what was wrong with that process? The process was, it was really kind of done exogenously from outside by consultants, paid consultants who don't live here. And that's always a kind of a problem, in my view.
So I, I think that we ought to, um, I think we owe the town board our help. And I think that the way, the best way I think to help is to, is to, to respond to the, to the. To the document that's in front of us because, and, and do it quickly and get it in rather than have it lagging. And, you know, waiting for them, waiting for the other, the other shoe to drop from the planning board. To get it to them so that it can be part of their thinking process now.
Right, exactly.
And if it's, and I think it ought to be the five things that, that we have said this evening, I think that we thought we could get done. Uh, the process, which we believe is pretty much wrapped up along with the town owned land. There may be some more questions about parking and how we manage that. There's a question about architecture and what we say about that. And then there's still this looming piece, affordable housing. I mean, we're either gonna do something or we're not. And so we, we, I mean, we're gonna just do it if we're gonna do it and put it in there. There was a, there were some. Comments that, uh, on affordable housing that we wanted to put into the review of the EIS, but thought that it was inappropriate. But with respect to the form based code, I think that now is probably the time in this document to get that kind of a. Policy question in there to them.
I'm happy to take a stab at that. I, I know I, you know, I can, I can take that, take a stab at it and circulate.
Right.
My earlier thoughts and.
Great, yeah. And I think again, Canaan, I think you've raised this a couple of times. Um, you know, from my personal standpoint, I know Eldad is, is a, is a big supporter of affordable housing. Um, but I am equally a supporter of workforce housing. I'm also an equal supporter of a mix of housing. Which is what was really called for in our comp plan. So, um, I don't think that's what we have with the, the current proposal. It's, it's, uh, relatively small units, all rentals. So if there's room, if, you know, whatever we think, and you guys are the experts in the house. But it seems to me that if you have a mix of housing and market and workforce and affordable, that's where you get strength. That's where you really get, um, something pulling together. And again, as we've done before, up a chapel called Crossing, so it's invisible. However, it is, you know, the market person with a penthouse is right next door to someone who's a workforce or affordable, whatever it is. You have no idea what the difference is in looking. Everyone is treated the same, which I think is critical.
Absolutely. And I think, uh, from you, what you're saying is also true in terms of being, uh, resilient. Having different mix, income mixes, really, that's what it is, right? Whether it's workforce housing, it is, yeah.
Yeah, however, that might be reached. Again, if, I don't know if it's, you know, whatever the combination, you know, you guys have done this before. I have not. And I'll be guided by your, your experience and, and, and thoughts on it, but it seems to me that, um. You know, this, this focus on, on smaller rental unit studios is, is not the way to go. And I know Dick has raised this, uh, issue a couple of times and I, I agree with that. I think it's, um, it should be, and I, Canaan, you raised it too. Should be, I think, a mix.
Well, can I, uh, ask about, um, uh, I think that, that, um, Jennifer, maybe you can help. I'm sure Sabrina can. On the subject of the unit mixes. Um, from studio to three bedroom to two bedroom to four bedroom, you know, the, the, the one bedroom. Um, is there, there, there is, no, there is no, nothing in the form based code that stipulates. It makes assumptions with regard to parking, so on and so forth in the EIS. But there is, there's nothing in the form gate base code that I'm aware of that stipulates that. You need to have a unit mix of, say, twenty percent studios, you know, fifty percent one bedrooms, et cetera. And I think that it doesn't stipulate it because I don't think legally you can stipulate it, but maybe I'm wrong. Uh, that it was really sort of market driven, that the assumptions in the EIS were driven by market assumptions. That were out there with a touch of affordable housing requirements that would yield a certain unit type. As a consequence of that, of that policy. So it, it is, is, so when we say, well, gee, you know, too many studios, well, we may feel that way, but. Do we, can we really control it anyway?
Actually, I think the fact that it is studios is, is the fact that we're saying we want some, a particular type of housing. If you're gonna leave it to market, the possibility of you having any sort of affordable units is kind of, it kind of just goes out of the window. I don't understand how having a studio sort of certains. Uh, in my mind, that doesn't mean just affordable housing, right? Affordable housing, eh, eh, as the, the legal sort of. Understanding of that is as long as a person, as long as a person is paying one third of their annual income. As rent and not more, uh, that's what you're sort of driving at and it's controlled by the area's median income. So whatever's the area's median, eh, area median income for the region, that's what you're taking as, as what. A, a household can pay for rent.
My, 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 my point is, is that, is that, the people are assuming they're gonna be studios, but nobody said that there, that there is no, nothing in the legislation. That says studios. There's nothing in legislation that says one bedroom apartments, right? There is something that the town can legislate with respect to affordable housing. And say, you need to be sure that a certain percentage of your units, right? Are for these people and the unit type will come out of that process.
Correct, and that, and everything will stay the same as in you're not building a separate, different product. For the affordable housing folks compared to the market rate. And I think that's.
We have that in our code today.
Right.
Oh, and, and so, so just to kind of clarify, you're, you're correct. Right now, the draft code does not have specific, uh, provisions regarding unit mix. The unit mix that are being studied in the EIS are based off of market. And what the consultant team had recommended should be the unit mix and that's what the analysis was conducted on. The discussions at the town board level with town council have alluded to trying to refine that unit mix in the proposed legislation. Um, you can legally do something like that. Um, and, uh, town council has said that they would provide information to the town board to incorporate into redrafts of the legislation. That is part of the environmental review process because there are comments that relate to that. So yet to be put into words.
So now's the time to get, give our input on the subject.
But am I hearing correctly, Sabrina, you're saying, yes, we, it can be legislated, having a different. Sort of unit mixes can be legislated and, okay.
Jen, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I know, I know you can legislate the size of the units. Um, and I, I believe unit mixes too. I would have to double check if there's a distinction between, you know, legislating. Uh, you know, you can have X percentage of one bedrooms, X percentage of two bedrooms within a particular development versus. Your units have to be, you know, at least X square feet, you know, between X square feet and Y square feet or no greater than. Than Y square feet in size. Um, certainly you, you see examples all over the place of municipalities. I think your code is, as well includes. Certain square footage limitations on unit sizes. Um, the common way to legislate, but as far as the actual unit mix, I, I'm gonna need to double check.
Yeah, and, and I, I can tell you that, that question came up at a town board meeting and Nick indicated that it can be done.
So if, if, if the objective is affordable housing, right? Uh, in, in the various sort of permutations and, and, um, categories that exist. Uh, to do that right, um, if the legislation, uh, has in it. The appropriate affordable housing requirements, the unit mixes will come out of that, right? It'll be determined by those designations. And so there's no need to say that, gee, there have to be so many two bedrooms and so many one bedrooms, I would think. Uh, that, that, that should be left up to, I would think, the developer. As it, for whatever the developer needs to do in order to meet the affordable housing requirement.
I think that the fault is market and then you make a reservation legislation, you know, through legislation for either workforce or affordable. And then you, you leave the balance to, to the marketplace. But to the marketplace, uh, is fine, but if, if, again, we're trying to help developers, we're trying to do something that's going to speed things up. It seems to me that we would want to encourage them to think in terms of the appropriate mix that will help the hamlet. We're going to reset, we're going to tell you that you have to have X percent, you know, workforce, X percent, uh, affordable. And then, and it's gotta mix in with the market and then you guys do as, as you think, uh, you need to. Subject to, you know, spatial, um, requirements.
So there are, there are different sort of unit types also where there's sort of work. Uh, live work units, right? Where you're sort of ta- talking about smaller retail type shop fronts and then you have a living situation behind. And that's been experimented a lot and, and that's definitely a sort of, in my mind, a unit type that can be explored. Given that, that particular area, right? It's, it's more pedestrian, as you said, it's more compact. There's the ability to create more of a community where there's, you know, development on both sides. That sort of builds a sort of a street language. And that's where it sort of ties in with some of the needs that you guys have been talking about in terms of retail. And whether it is, you know, very light industrial or somebody like, you know, building, um, toys and selling, you know, or those kind of. Stores, um, but is also living at the back and, and that's really the model. And, um, so there are different types of housing. Unit types, so to speak, that we can suggest and talk about. And I don't know whether that is appropriate, but I think, I think it is important for us to. If we're gonna talk about you, housing, leaving all type, you know, the unit types to the developers. Um, in my mind is a lost opportunity because, uh, there is some level of, um. If, if you're gonna go with the market forces, you're going to get what the market sort of gives you. And yes, twenty percent of it is affordable and it could be affordable. But if we are going to sort of say that this is, this is a unique, uniquely different experience. Because we've thought about how we can accommodate these various uses and this type of unit, unit types. Then we should sort of comment on that, I think, but.
That, that's interesting. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Uh, because, uh, I lived in Singapore for about a year and a half. And, uh, there is a unit type there, which is historic, which is called the shop house. And, uh, it, it makes a fabulous, fabulous street. And essentially the, the front half of the, that's, I mean, it's classic. I mean, it's not just in Singapore, it's a historic, uh, building type. Uh, in the front half of the, of the unit is, uh, the ground floor is the shop. And then the back and the upper floors are, are housing. And, um, or just the upper floors are housing, that's, you know, residential over, over retail. But it's all, in this particular case, it's sort of owned by the house is a two-story, three-story row house. It's owned by the guy and lives there who actually runs the shop. And it's a terrific, terrific, uh, building type. And what it, what it does, I think, in addition to getting that mix. It also, it, it, it engenders a sense of ownership of the street.
Yes.
By the people who live there, uh, cause they not only work there, but they live there. And it's, it makes fabulous, fabulous neighborhoods.
And you have the, you have the ability to stack like an, a, a forty, you know, a normal apartment building on top. Like I've seen, you know, I've, I've worked on buildings like that in Seattle where it's live work sort of at the base. And then there is apartments on top and, and some of these apartments could, eh, you know, were market rate and very, very fancy. And then you had these other sort of unit mixes within that, which, which allowed for a lot more income flexibility. So again, I mean, I'm happy to sort of allude to some of these, these housing types and put together something that's more expansive and then.
Right.
Yeah, all of you can sort of go at it and tell me what's appropriate and what's not.
I think that'd be great. In my experience, we've never had this kind of conversation in town. And boy, if there ever was a time to have it, it's right in the middle of the process they're going through right now. So I think it would be terrific.
Agreed.
And, uh, that sounds great to me. I would also add that, I mean, really, uh, as far as. You know, affordable housing, there's like three main variables. Um, and I think that we should comment on all three. One is the percentage. One is the, the, the level of affordability and that's, um, you know, uh, the, the question where workforce housing comes in. And, you know, I mean, the, the, the issue of workforce housing or, or, or more deeply affordable, um. You know, I, it's like, uh, you know, we, unfortunately, there's, we, there's demand for all of it. But, um, but, um, you know, so we should comment as to what we think the levels of affordability should be. And then there's the question of the unit type, which, um, whether it's, you know, uh. Legal or not, let, let somebody else, that's somebody else's problem. Um, we could, we, we could give our, our comments, which is we think X or Y, and that may also. Uh, come into play with what you're suggesting, Canaan, which is, uh, some of the live work stuff and, um. There's no, you know, if, if we can be straightforward and clear as to what is important, what we think is important and valuable, let's do that.
So I, I think that, that, that where this would really come into play and be most valuable. Is not necessarily in North Greeley because it's a very, very limited piece of real estate. And the, the number of units and percentages are gonna be, uh, it's, it's gonna be tough, I think, for anybody to develop a, along that. For any of the people on the north side of the street to develop, uh, to develop their, uh, just doing market rate. Uh, but where this conversation will really come into play is when the town owned land comes up.
Absolutely.
And that's where the public policy can have, uh, can sort of flex itself. You know, can spread his elbows and say, okay, this is our land and this is how we're gonna do this. We're gonna be putting these things into place and making it work on our property. Um, so I think that it's, it, it informs really the future, uh, as much as it does, um. The current town board and how, how they're gonna deal with North Greeley.
Read a hundred percent. That's what I was getting at before, that, that this is an opportunity that we've, if we're able to get it right here. Then perhaps it'll just be adopted, uh, in, in a larger area down the line, hopefully.
Yeah, it, it increases incrementally.
So I'd like to, to, to cycle back just for a second on the, the, uh, the environmental or memo. On the, uh, G I S. I also had had a, a couple of conversations, um, about the memo. And, um, I, my response, my response was. We did that to support the town board. The comments there were really directed at the consultants who, in our review, in my opinion, our review of the EIS had fallen short in so many ways that they really, in my view, left the town board vulnerable to, um, the kinds of, uh, of, uh, responses that they've been now been getting throughout this, uh, throughout this process. And that, um, perhaps the people sort of took the memo as being critical of the town board, but it really was not meant to be critical of town board. I thought we were very careful to say that we supported them. We were very careful to say that this was a memo which was meant to, to, to sort of clean up the EIS, to make it a better document and one that they could support. And so I think it's unfortunate and Eldad's right, you have to be careful about these things because, you know, people hear what they wanna hear, not necessarily what they're being told. And so sometimes you have to be real careful about tone and real careful about what you say. But I, I don't feel bad at all about what we did. I think that we, we did them, you know, we do what we're supposed to do. And I'm sure that we're gonna do the same with this next memo, but perhaps we ought to be especially careful about tone.
Tom, I agree with you completely.
Okay, um, well, uh, Canaan, can we look forward then to some, uh, some writing from you in terms of some thoughts on the, on housing? Um, Tom, I know you gave us some thoughts and theories on architecture. It seems to me that we need to tighten that up and, and make some specific recommendations. I really enjoyed your writing, but I think we have to make specific recommendations on, you know, when we call it down. And then Tom has made some, I thought, some very good comments and, and suggested changes to my drafts, my issues. It seems to me that we can work on those and get, you know, again, the town-owned land situation and, um, the process situation, uh, done and ready. It, even we get it out now or do it all together, it's fine. Whatever we feel is, is best, but, uh, let's get some things done here so that we can actually have some markers and, and start to move forward.
So I, I think I can get something over to you by the, by Sunday. Is that too late?
No, that's fine.
No, that's great.
So let's, let's.
So let me ask a question, you know, I know you're talking about dates and everything. Is there an interest in setting a special meeting as we were doing on Thursdays or do you just wanna add this to the end of your agendas?
I think special meetings are better, probably. We can focus on that and, um, you know, we have our cutoff at eight-thirty, which we violated tonight, but we had a regular meeting tonight. And I think, you know, clearing the deck and starting fresh on, on, personally, I think on this issue works better.
I, it, you know, additionally, listening to all of you, I think what can be done is, once we're done with this, I, I mean, we can always send it over, but what we can then sort of add is take each of those topics and sort of add specific information that we think is best for this particular section, North Greeley. And that would then really be informing them, not just like, here's what we think about as a whole, but then here's the specifics for a certain.
Right, right. I, I think we could do that and we can get, you know, two out very quickly. And we talked about and then tell them that there's more to come. If you, if you like what you saw before, there's more. If not, well, there's still more.
I have a question.
Sure, just, just there.
My, my question is that, that, um, for the, the form-based stuff and the architecture, should we also invite a representative from the architectural review board?
Well, they were submitting a document, right, Sabrina?
Well, they have just, they met with the town board this evening, actually, and discussed the form-based code. They provided, I, I met with them separately. They held two meetings to talk about the, the form-based code. And they met tonight with the town board to share their concern, you know, their comments and provided the town board the minutes with the summary of their, their comments. So, um, they've already commented, um, you know, I don't know that, you know, if you want to invite somebody, I don't think that that's, you know.
Do we see those comments?
Yeah, we can send them to you.
Pretty nice.
Yeah, we'll send you the minutes.
Great.
I don't, um, just on the subject of architecture, if we're gonna get information from that, then we're not gonna close that subject tonight, clearly. But just to open it for a second, um, uh, you know, to me, again, it's a, it's really a slippery kind of a thing to try and get a hold of. Um, uh, you know, I have a personal feeling about it, but it's only a personal feeling. Um, and, you know, I, I hold those feelings pretty strongly, but those are, you know, I don't wanna elevate this discussion to sort of, uh, you know, let's all get in the trenches and, you know, battle over it, uh, with the town board. It's just, it's just not, it's just not productive. I just don't think that, I don't think that it's something that is really worth battling, uh, when there are really more important things, I think, to worry about. Because I think it's a, it's probably a conversation we're gonna, we're gonna lose. There, uh, may be some things with respect to, uh, these, uh, regimented, rigorous, uh, proportions in facades, right? That are regu- that are stipulated in the form-based code, which may actually create problems for purpose-built buildings, right? Um, these are building fronts which people go into to try and do new uses in old buildings and have a, quite a bit of difficulty frequently trying to get things to work properly and work efficiently. And, um, it's, it seems to me that we may be actually building in impediments to those kinds of uses that might have trouble with respect to, to all of this stuff. Um, and Bob, you suggested maybe there are some specifics that we could, we could offer. And that's about all I could say is that it seems to me that we're, we're regulating a little bit too tightly and, uh, making things.
I think that's the takeaway, yeah.
Making things more difficult when actually the, the whole idea of the form-based code was to make things easier, right?
Uh, there, there's the comment, I think, on architecture, right there, those, those couple of sentences, I think, is really, is really it. That's the takeaway for me. I got that from your, your writing, which I thought was terrific. But I think the takeaway is, you know, guys, be careful, we're being too rigorous, we're imposing too many standards. And again, I, I hadn't thought about that with uses, but that's, 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 it's an impediment, it's a potential impediment. So another good reason, I, I've heard from other architects who just flat out said, this is just crazy, you're imposing a style on me. And why can't I use a good, modern, uh, you know, contemporary look, you know, why is that being prohibited? And, um, you know, I had, I don't have an answer to it, other than it seems to me that we're being a little bit overly restrictive. Not a little bit, probably a lot.
And, and this is the exact type of comment I was talking about before that I think is helpful. Uh, instead of wasting time, not wasting, but, you know, spending too much time on, on, on details, whereas the, the point is, hey, this isn't exactly right, something, something's off here and this is how it should change.
Right. Yep.
Okay, I can, on, on, on that, uh, on that guidance, I can go ahead and take another crack at this.
Good, that'd be great.
You wanna start off with, hey, exclamation mark, and then, and then take it from there.
Well, we're gonna do that at every point. Hey, you.
Hey.
So, so is it a point where you guys think that you wanna meet next week, the week after? Uh. So next Thursday is the eleventh?
The week after, I think.
Yeah, I think the week after, maybe eighteenth.
March eighteenth.
Uh, let me check.
I go.
That would be Bob.
What's that?
You're echoing.
Oh, am I echoing?
Your computer, you, you, your computer mic is on with your phone.
No, it's off.
No, it's, uh, Dick, sorry.
Me.
He's on.
Oh, eighteenth is okay. So I'll do eighteenth.
Works for me.
Okay, six-thirty on the eighteenth.
Right.
I have a question. We don't send out the calendar invites, is that because?
The what?
We don't, we can send calendar invites through your town email. Okay, I see what you're saying. Never mind.
We have a calendar, we have a calendar for all our scheduled meetings, that these are special meetings.
Yep.
For extra credit.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm making sure that I mark it right now on my.
And, uh, unfortunately, folks, it's hard for us to send to your personal emails.
No, I get it, I get it. That's.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that comment. From now on, I know I sent an email, but everything we send to you will be on Town email.
That's totally okay. That's.
Okay.
The last.
You have difficulty checking your email or getting, you know, risk, you know, getting into that system? By all means, please contact Felicia and she will make sure that you get support.
No, that's fine. I'm.
Great.
Uh, uh, by the way, is, is Carrie, are you with us? Carrie?
I think Pam is doing it.
No, Pam is.
Pam, I just gotta give a shout out to the, to Carrie and Pam and the people behind the scenes who make this happen. Uh, it's just, it's terrific.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to Carrie and let her know, too.
Yeah, thank you.
I like it better than regular meetings. We don't, we save all this travel.
Hey, I.
Relative to email access. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so relative to that, I found that I couldn't access the town's email until I took off the, the last backslash and the word, the letters O W A, and then it works through Google Chrome.
Okay. So, well, uh, uh, Tom, you'll work on the architectural thing. Um, we can try to tighten up those, um, process and town land, uh, segments. Tom will work on, and, and I, Tom, when we talk about architecture, do you wanna also tackle? I mean, I think it's sort of woven in there, you know, bulk and height. I know Sabrina had, uh, mentioned that specifically as, as a separate segment. Seems to me it's pretty closely tied together, but not necessarily, um, congruent.
Actually, it's, I don't think it's closely enough.
Okay.
Um, but it, but that's a big, that's a big subject.
It is, and we haven't touched on it.
We, we haven't, not really sort of, I'll take a shot at that as a separate subject.
I think it's, it's important to look at, especially in view of the smaller, tighter area that we're looking at.
Well, again, uh, okay, yes, so I'll do that without reference to the smaller, tighter area. I'll, I'm still, I still think we, I need to respond. I still think the code is written.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
So, but I, I, I wouldn't get too detailed on that, only because I think part of the, uh, limiting of the geographic scope, uh, from the town board's point of view has to do with this whole bulk issue. And as, it's sort of a way to avoid that and other issues associated with, with, uh, larger development and construction activity and all that. And so I would imagine that, um, one day were this to be revived or expanded beyond the pilot area, um, the issue of bulk would, you know, heights would just be, uh, an entirely fresh topic. And, and any comments we make now, thinking that they would apply to the area in general, it, it might be wasted.
Well, I'm not, uh, uh, let me take a shot at it.
Okay.
Not sure I agree with that, but we'll have a better sense of that, uh, after we have some text to look at.
Good.
There, there's one more thing, uh, Bob, sorry, but.
Sure.
I, I think that, uh, how do I, how do I say this without going out on a limb? Uh, the, the, the whole parking thing, to me, is, it's, the consultant, it seemed to me that, 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 the, that the strategies and devices that were used to come up to with, uh, to, to sort of solve a parking problem were, were ways in which to justify density by coming up with all these sort of, to me, uh, uh, strategies that actually would never work. Somebody, you know, taking a shuttle bus from parking, right, to, to come into town. Or shuttle bus or walking, you know, a quarter mile or a half a mile to a remote parking lot from your unit. That, that's, you know, you do that in Manhattan, but you don't come to, you don't come to Chappaqua for that kind of a, of a thing. And, and so it seemed to me that that was sort of tacked on in order to provide a relief valve for density. And I just wonder if we believe that those strategies are appropriate? If we believe that those strategies, uh, should, should be looked at again? Whether they, uh, they're realistic? Um, or we should just let them go by without, you know, a specific comment on that subject?
Well, you know, that's a very interesting question because I, you know, I guess we were touching on it in the EIS. I thought for a while, we thought that was an EIS issue. Because it was really the environmental part, part, traffic and, and parking was sort of like the, you know, the, the, they played in together. But I don't think we ever really looked at it. We just said, there's a toolkit here and, you know, the other tools and, and look at it block by block. But I happen to agree with you. I, 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 I thought, uh, I think I had written in one of my comments at one point, uh, I thought some of those suppositions were, uh, uh, questionable. And again, it was sort of like a Rube Goldberg, uh, type of approach to, uh, snatch victory from, uh, out of these constraints.
So are you talk, what? Right, right now, there's a status quo, if you, there is a status quo with what parking is today, what the parking requirements are today. And then there's this sort of aggressive, what we are talking about as a very ta- city-like parking, uh, conversation that this, this code is suggesting. Where would you see the, us being? Is it somewhere in between? Or would you just say that what we have is fine? Internal parking requirements?
Uh, the, the way I would approach it is, this is, this isn't Manhattan, this isn't White Plains, right? Um, this is, uh, this is, is, you know, Chappaqua Hamlet. And these, the, uh, I would question whether the strategies are actually realistic. We had a parking consultant come in and give a presentation on all these different devices that are common practice in state. Parking world that he was using to, uh, apply to our situation. And the question I'm raising is whether, that I think all those recommendations, just full hog.
To revise the recommendation, is that what you're saying? Sorry, I'm missing it. Okay. Are you on mute or something? We can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear at the end. First, then I had this horn blowing over the fire department, so it was a tough thing. I, I mean, I, I, I came about, I, one of the things I wrote on was the, the, the model or the supposition, the baseline that we supplied to the consultants, and I wasn't quite sure, uh, it was appropriate, and that was uh, no net loss of parking. And here we're trying to propose additional density, uh, within the Hamlet. I wasn't quite sure that was the, the standard that we should use. Uh, I thought by definition that was going to make things very, very tight. And then to get out from underneath that, that reality, we started saying stuff that, um, you know, a little bit changes in the models in terms of what our standards are in terms of the number of spots necessary per unit, per type of retail, et cetera. And then there was this other, I thought, very unrealistic, um, supposition regarding the nighttime versus daytime use of the parking lot, uh, the commuter parking lot, uh, which I thought was just flat out absurd. I mean, people start getting, I mean, once we return to, you know, pre-COVID times and we, we resume some usage of, of that parking lot, I think it's, it's unrealistic to suppose that someone's gonna run out to that parking lot and start getting their car out of that parking lot at six o'clock in the morning so that the commuters can come in and use it. And I don't know where the car's gonna go anyway, but that was the supposition. I thought that was, it's crazy.
Uh, just real quickly on this, one of the. And he does three hundred minutes.
Uh, you're breaking up really badly.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you, Tom.
This can't hear me, too.
Okay.
I was gonna say you can chat if you wanna type in the chat. I was gonna say you can chat if you want to type in the chat window.
You know, you, you can defer this to your special meeting. I will be in Town Hall tomorrow if you want me to help you with your computer and kind of get you up and running again.
Great.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks.
All right, well, this is an official meeting, so is there a motion to close the meeting?
I, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Very good.